We are here now for the next Zoom installment of the regular meeting of the City Council for September 2020. If you all will rise so we can have the invocation by Councilwoman Irvin, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
To our wonderful Creator, we thank you for this precious day. We thank you for the precious sunshine. We ask that you come within this meeting, that you may guide us with your wisdom and your knowledge, that we will do what is just and best for this city, that you have given us the honor to serve. So we welcome you into this meeting today to have your way for the citizens of Florence, South Carolina. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance. We may be having some difficulty with the audio. Can the members all hear well?
Yes.
Very well.
Yes.
All right. Are we all clear, Mr. Stevens? Very well. You all have in your packets the meeting from the August 10th, 2020, regular meeting. Is there a motion? We approve the minutes.
I move.
There's a motion by the Pro Tem. Second by Councilwoman Irvin, I believe.
Yes.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Pose like sign. Very well, the minute is passed unanimously. Yes, hello? I think we just had some feedback there. All right. Next matter for our consideration or appearances before council, and for that purpose, Mr. Lou Zeller of the Blue Ridge Environmental Defense League has called in. Danny, we can have Mr. Zeller now if he can be patched in. While he's doing that, Mr. Zeller seeks to discuss an environmental issue related to a proposed pipeline along the P D River in Pamlico. Very well, Mr. Zeller, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Very well, this is Stephen Wukila. Mr. Zeller, you are alive and the members can hear you, as can the public. We'd be happy to hear from you.
Very good. Thank you very much. My name is Lou Zeller. I'm Executive Director of the Blue Ridge Environmental Defense League, which has projects and members in six southeastern states. I appreciate the opportunity to address the council this morning, or this afternoon. On behalf of Blue Ridge and its members, we request that the City of Florence ask the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control to schedule a hearing for public comment on the proposed RiverNet Kingsburg natural gas pipeline permit. We further request that the city review the proposal. As you may know, Dominion Energy South Carolina has applied for permits to construct a 14-mile natural gas pipeline near the great P D River in Florence County. We recommend denial of the permit application. According to Dominion Energy, the proposed RiverNet Kingsburg pipeline would pass through 27 jurisdictional wetlands across two tributaries, causing both temporary and permanent impacts in these sensitive and critical ecosystems. The Clean Water Act requires that the Corps independently evaluate and verify the information supplied by the applicant in determining whether to issue a Section 404 permit. Therefore, we are asking today that the City of Florence undertake an independent engineering analysis to verify Dominion Energy's information about the risks of disaster and its ability to respond to a worst-case discharge, construction sediment into waterways. We believe that Dominion Energy project is not in the public interest. Under the federal Clean Water Act, the decision whether to issue a permit will be based on an evaluation of the probable impacts, including cumulative impacts of proposed activity and its intended use in the public interest. The public interest includes all relevant issues that could impact the environment, human health, and natural resources. Federal regulations include a list of factors which may be relevant, including conservation, economics, wetlands, historic properties, fish, wildlife, flood hazards, flood plains, erosion, recreation, water supply, water quality, safety, food production, private property ownership, and in general, the needs and welfare of the people. Specific wildlife factors we have identified include habitat of red cockaded woodpeckers and can-bees cowbane. Review of the safety factors indicates that this project would pose serious risks to the environment and citizens. In November 2019, one of Dominion Energy's newly installed gas lines exploded in Pepper Pike in Ohio. Investigation by the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio revealed that the cause of the explosion and resulting fire at 1:00 in the morning was Dominion Energy's failure to follow established welding procedures, insufficient inspection, and oversight of the construction site, which led to the pipeline being subject to excessive strain. Closer to home, in 2018, Dominion failed to control sediment near its 55-mile pipeline it had built in the upstate here in the South Carolina. Sediment washing off the pipeline's construction sites wound up in creeks that feed into the South Tiger River, where the Woodruff-Robuck Water Supply District had an intake pipe. The runoff from Dominion's construction also worked its way into the river, clogged the pipe, causing Woodruff-Robuck System to buy water from another utility from more than 10,000 customers south of Spartanburg. Ultimately, a $4,200 fine was issued by the state. In conclusion, Dominion Energy has not met its burden on demonstrating why this proposal meets federal and state guidelines. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zeller. Thank you for that information. I can assure you, this council is certainly always cognizant and concerned about environmental issues. I know the Pro Tem and I, along with the local chamber and university, were letter- opposing offshore drilling some time ago, buddy, and luckily, that's not come to fruition, and perhaps, I think, the administration has changed somewhat their approach in that regard. As to this particular issue, Mr. Zeller, I think I understand, for those who are at home, so they can understand clearly, Dominion intends to construct a natural gas pipeline that will run through a portion of our area, down in the Pamlico area, near the P D River and across P D River in that area. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And in order to accomplish that, they've got to jump through a number of hurdles, including get a permit from the Department of Health and Environmental Control, which will use the Clean Water Act as a standard by which they determine whether they're going to issue that permit.
That's correct, and I've talked to DHEC officials, and they've not scheduled it yet.
All right. Very well. Well, we certainly have, you know, a utility that we operate here, Mr. Zeller, and we have an engineer, and we will examine that permit application and consider what impact it has, and certainly voice our interests to Department of Health and Environmental Control. Just, and this is premature for me to do this, really, but just briefly, I'm going to put Mr. Hemingway, the director of the utility, on the spot, if I may, Mr. Osterman. Come forward for just one second, Michael. Mr. Hemingway, our utility uses water that comes from the P D River as well as from wells.
Correct, yes, sir.
Can you tell us where along the P D River this pipeline would be, and whether it would be upstream or downstream from our collection point?
This point would be downstream from our collection point, re withdraw water from the great P D River north of I-95. This is going to be just a little bit north of the town of Pamlico, so we have approximately like 20 to 30 river miles in between the two connection points where their line will stop and where we withdraw water from the river.
Okay. Any further questions from members of council, from Mr. Hemingway?
I have one from Mr. Zeller, if you would take that. Mr. Zeller, this is Buddy Brand. Just a question, why, so it's not following the P D River all the way down from the Yadkin River in North Carolina, it's just coming across, where is it coming, where's the northernmost part in South Carolina where it enters the state?
It's, it is intrastate pipeline, so it does not cross the state line, and it's just, as was described a moment ago, in the Pamlico community. And I could send you a map, in fact, I will.
I think our official water head just gave me a map, and that's exactly what I wanted to understand. Okay, thank you.
Yes, and we are in touch with residents who are very concerned about this. That was the cause for Blue Ridge Environmental Defense League to become involved in this, and the subject of eminent domain, I think, looms large, because we believe it is not in the public interest.
Mr. Zeller, thank you, and thank you for your time, and
Mayor.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
Yes, I would like to request that the map that was just shared, that it be sent to all of us.
Sure.
And also, Mr. Ziegler, if possible, could you please spark some information in writing to us as well, so we can have the information?
Certainly, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anything further from membership? Hearing nothing. Mr. Zeller, thank you for your time, and thank you for this information, and council staff will certainly be attentive to this issue and be paying close attention.
All right, I appreciate the opportunity today, and very cordial positions taken by your staff, they were very helpful to me.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Zeller, for your attention to this issue as well.
Along.
Thank you, members. The next matter for our considerations, ordinance and position, Bill Number 2020-27, for a second reading, in order to execute a lease agreement, to lease the upstairs office suite and downstairs conference room of building located 152 South McCoon Street, portion of Florence County Tax Matt Parcel 90074-05002. There's a motion to approve by the Pro Tem. There's several seconds, I think Councilwoman Davidson-Haymore, I saw her hand for sure. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, measure passed unanimously. Next matter for our consideration is introduction of ordinance, this is Bill Number 2020-28. This is the first and only reading in that it is a bill to extend the emergency ordinance that we've previously hadn't extended before.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilwoman
Irvin.
I'm sorry?
It was by, yeah, by Irvin.
Okay, and it's, it was a motion by
And a second by Moore.
And a second by Moore. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate, I'm sorry.
Question, I'm sorry, it's probably trying to pull up my agenda, is, are we extending it for 30 days, or is it longer?
It's a 60-day extension, Councilwoman, and that's, that's the longest, I think, as is allowed by statute.
Okay.
Other questions? I would add, folks, that as onerous and difficult as this ordinance is for everybody, we would rather not have Zoom meetings, and we would rather not have masks and so forth, there have been some very positive statements by DHEC on this issue. In fact, they issued, DHEC issued a statement saying that those counties and municipalities that have implemented mask ordinances have seen a right significant decrease in the onset of cases, somewhere in the neighborhood of about 30%, whereas jurisdictions that have not have seen an increase in 15%. So a gross decrease of 46% by the use of these ordinances, and they committed them to everyone, as has the governor. So as onerous as it is, it is evidently and scientifically effective, so we appreciate council's tolerance of this requirement. There's been a motion, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Thank you, members. Ordinance passes unanimously. Next is Bill Number 2020-29. This is a first reading ordinance submission approving the construction of capital improvement projects, including repair and retrofitting of stormwater system to minimize damage to public and private property. You all will recall that periodically, we pass ordinances to approve a variety of stormwater construction projects as they come forward, and finances are available for them. This is exactly one of those, and Mr. Hemingway is here to present on that, so that we can hear from Mr. Hemingway. Can we have a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, I think I heard from Councilwoman Irvin, and second by the Pro Tem, Mr. Hemingway.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of City Council. This ordinance, as in your packet, is to move forward with the projects that were presented during our budget work session earlier this year, and we look forward to pushing this forward into next year, when it begins to start, and then we'll be back after the first of the year with our fellow member, Kevin Yocum, to do a bond ordinance for the next set of borrowings, to do these proposed projects for the next cycle of stormwater projects for the Florence community.
Thank you, Mr. Hemingway. Questions for Mr. Hemingway? Hearing none, there's been a motion, second, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign, measure passed unanimously. Next bill is Bill Number 2020-30, for a first reading ordinance to amend the budget for fiscal year July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021, to reappropriate 2019-20 funds for uncompleted projects and purchases. You all recall, this is our standard practice of not appropriating funds for certain construction projects and other purposes until we see what the revenues come in at the end of the year. We have now seen what those revenues are, and are positioned to reappropriate. Mr. Yocum is here to present on that matter. Is there a motion?
I move.
Motion by the
Second.
Second, by Councilwoman Irvin, and more. Mr. Yocum.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. As the mayor has aptly stated, these are projects that were originally included in the FY 1920 budget, that were held till near the end of the fiscal year, especially in the year of COVID, to see how the revenues came in. We have sufficient revenues in place to carry these projects over into fiscal 2021, and as the mayor has stated, this is a very standard practice the city's employed for a number of years.
Very well, motion, second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign, measure passed unanimously. We have a companion bill, Number 2020-31, for first reading ordinance to amend the budget also for the fiscal year July 1, 2020, ending June 30, 2021, to appropriate funds from excess fund balance. This is, of course, while keeping a healthy fund balance, as Pro Tem always makes sure we do, and I'm sure Mr. Yocum will speak to that, Mr. Brand. There's a motion, I think, from Councilwoman Irvin? Did I hear?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Moore. Mr. Yocum.
Thank you again, Mayor, and members of council. As the mayor has stated, the city has had an informal policy for a number of years to maintain a fund balance in the general fund in an amount that exceeds 30% of the previous year's expenditures, and as a result of great financial management, over the past two or three years, the city has built up a fund balance above that amount, and there in this ordinance includes a few projects that are being funded by this excess fund balance, but however, with these expenditures, we will still retain a fund balance level above that 30% threshold.
Very well, thank you, Mr. Yocum. Other questions?
Mayor, I just don't want to get these council members the idea that all this excess has gotten to be spent.
Well, no, it is, we laugh about it, but it is a very fair point, isn't it, Mr. Pro Tem, that, you know, the purpose of having a healthy fund balance is to protect us from emergency situations, exactly like we're seeing right now, and it also, having that ability to respond to emergency situations with that kind of excess fund balance is also always attractive to those who would rate our creditworthiness and who would lend us money, and that's always benefited the taxpayer. So, you know, we joke about the Pro Tem being particular with the penny in that regard, but that has always served us very, very well, and we appreciate that, as has it with our staff, and so, thank you for that, Mr. Yocum. There's been a motion, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in I'm sorry? Did I hear discussion? Nope. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign, measure passed unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Yocum. The next matter for our consideration is Bill 220-32, for a first reading ordinance to amend the UDO to add conditions for brew pubs, microbreweries, and micro distilleries. Mr. Dudley is here to present on that, and this is another example of us continuing to refine and improve the UDO that we passed in a very comprehensive way here so recently, although it's not as recent as it used to be, is it, Mr. Dudley?
That's correct.
So that we can hear from Mr. Dudley, is there a motion?
I move.
There's a motion by the Pro Tem, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Councilwoman Dabell, Mr. Dudley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. I am going to switch over to a PowerPoint here, so that we can better understand this. And currently, we are able to allow many of these uses, however, this amendment syncs our code up with state law, as well as makes it a little easier to put some conditions in place that may, you know, mitigate some of the nuisances associated with this. There we go. So I'm going to dive right in, and to start off, I'm going to talk briefly about the breweries and then distilleries, so it'll be broken into two parts. And breweries are essentially, you know, one that, or a manufacturer that brews beer, and by state law, it is over 15,000 U.S. barrels, which is about 465 gallons per year. And then a microbrewery, which is just a smaller version of a brewery, brews less than 15,000 gallons per year. And in the amendment to our code, we are essentially classifying a brewery as a heavy industrial use. So a full-fledged brewery would be restricted to those areas in the city where heavy industry would be allowed.
If you drink enough, it'd be heavy.
That, yes, it would.
Do we currently have any breweries in the jurisdiction?
We don't, not any full-fledged. Any one that we have would be considered a microbrewery.
Yes, sir.
Or a brew pub. A brew pub, by definition, brews 2,000 gallons or less of beer per year, and they function very, I mean, I'm sorry, U.S. barrels of beer per year, and they function very much like a bar. The state requires them to have a food component to their establishment. And this slide kind of sums up, you know, the state law in that the production limit for a brewery is none, brew pub is 2,000 gallons again, and a microbrewery is 15,000 barrels per year. And onsite consumption, and this is where some of the variability occurs, with a brewery, you can serve onsite up to 48 ounces, so four pints of beer to a customer per day. You can also sell 288 ounces of beer to a customer per day from, you know, that you brew yourself. However, there is no food prep requirement for that establishment, as opposed to a brew pub, which has a much lower, you know, production limit of 2,000 barrels, however, there is no onsite consumption limit, so they function very much like a bar would within our city. But they are required to have a food component to them, just as a bar would be in our city, up to 30%. And then a microbrewery, again, is in the middle of that, but they function on a state level very much like a brewery, in that they can only serve four pints and the 288 ounces of beer, but no food requirement there. So when we took it to planning commission, the, obviously, the brewery would be, the full-fledged brewery would be pushed to heavy industrial and follow those requirements, however, and the brew pub would fall anywhere within the city that we currently allow a bar, and it would follow pretty much exactly the same requirements, conditional requirements as a bar would, but we also added some conditions related to the production area, meaning that a loading area would have to be located to the rear of the structure, and the deliveries are limited to between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., because they would have a light manufacturing component, so we wanted to limit some of those nuisances. Now, a microbrewery, the, from the 2,000 barrels per year up to the 15,000 barrels per year, we looked at some other breweries across the state and across the region to look at the intensity of the use, and we felt that a full-fledged 15,000 barrels per year was a fairly intense use. For example, Westbrook Breweries in Mount Pleasant, they produce approximately 7,000 barrels per year, and they're currently located in a light industrial area, which is, and they have two large warehouse-type buildings that they occupy. So we felt that it was important to break it out into the zoning designations. So, essentially, in the areas that would allow, currently allow a bar, which is the general commercial, the downtown CBD, Activity Center, and Destination Services area, we would limit the production to 3,000 barrels per year, and, you know, these are the same districts that would allow bars and brew pubs, so that puts a cap on that at 3,000. Moving up to light industrial areas, we would cap that at 10,000 barrels. Again, that's a medium intensity use, that's your, like your Westbrook and places like that. I don't know if you're familiar with Holy City, you know, that they have a larger production facility that I believe they have out of, away from their main brew pub area. So some of these would fit more in our light industrial, and anything above 10,000, even though it falls within that definition of microbrewery, we felt was more reserved to our heavy industrial areas. So this is kind of how the breakout occurred. All of the conditions and such are in your packet, so I won't go through everything, but we did include references to our alcohol ordinance, our onsite consumption, such that these establishments would have to distance themselves from residential areas, depending on what zoning district they're in. They would also, you know, if they're a brew pub, be required to have that food component, and even if they're in a light industrial area, they would still have to mitigate some of the nuisances associated with being adjacent to residential uses and such. And also, as with the brew pub, microbreweries would have to have loading areas located to the rear of the structure, the manufacturing would have to be interior to the structure, and the deliveries would be limited to the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. And in the light industrial area, where they would have their cap at 10,000, they would have to meet all the underlying conditions or conditional requirements of a light industry in that district, as well as being separated from residential uses. And in the heavy industrial, the same would apply. We would obviously lighten up on the outdoor requirements for equipment and such, but they would still have to separate themselves from a single family or residential use in this case. Distilleries, we included that in this update to the ordinance as well, and a distillery is obviously a facility that produces over 125 cases of liquor per year, that's approximately 297 and a half thousand gallons, or, yeah, 1,000 gallons. And then a micro distillery is considered anything that produces less than that. And to put that in the same chart as we had before with the microbreweries and breweries, a distillery would have no production limit, again, micro distillery, 125,000 cases, onsite consumption limit, meaning if they had a tasting room, a patron could consume up to three ounces of product per day, and they could sell three bottles of 750 milliliters each to a customer per day, and there's no food requirement, because this would be considered by state law to be a tasting room. And again, a distillery, a full-fledged distillery, would be limited to our heavy industrial district, and a micro distillery, we would allow in the similar districts that we allow microbreweries, with a breakdown if they produce less than 5,000 cases per year on an annual basis, which is about 1,200 gallons, they would be limited to our Activity Center, Central Business District, Commercial General, and Destination Services, which is where a bar would currently be allowed, and they would have the same conditions upon them that the micro distilleries would have. And anything from up to 50,000 cases would be restricted to the industrial or light industrial area, and then anything above that, even though it falls within that micro distillery label, would be restricted to heavy industrial. So we've, we've kind of tiered it out by intensity and what we think will fit in our zoning designations. And that concludes staff's report.
Mr. Dudley, this is obviously significantly more specific and clear with regard to these uses than we currently have in the UDO, but, and that has its own merit, no doubt, but it doesn't strike me, though, that the effect really is it doesn't strike me, though, that the effect really is substantially different than, than we would have today. If we had a 15,000 gallon producer that came to us today, they would be in the heavy industrial classification in any event.
That, that's correct, yes.
And you, you think?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. I'm full of questions today. First of all, I think Chuck Pope, Mr. Pope and I would be inclined to be on the enforcement part of this.
They were going to check out in the heavy industrial, too.
If there's a need for enforcement, forget, forget, you know, the young lady that does enforcement for houses, we'll, we'll handle that, Chuck. And I do have one question, this is for Chief Hader, who's going to regulate the Stumpel Moonshine part of this?
You don't have to worry about that.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Maybe we should have included you on the research end.
Absolutely, that'd be good. It would never have gotten done.
Thank you.
Very well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Pro Temp.
Got to have some lightness, sir.
That's correct. Anything further from members?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
This is, this is not about the presentation, does anyone, does anyone keep losing their connection?
Are there?
I keep losing my connection here.
Danny's telling us that the connection is, seem to be stable?
Only, only, just give us now more, the only one has dropped off so far.
Pat, you're the only one who's dropped off so far, if that, if that persists, we'll certainly look to it, let, let us know, Danny, too, if, if that persists. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Very well, there's been a motion, second, any further discussion on the, on the UDO amendment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose a like sign, measure passes unanimously, Mr. Pope and Mayor Pro Temp Brand are on enforcement. Bill 2020-33 for first reading, ordinance annexed zone RG3 and CG88 acres located along Freedom Boulevard, located as tax map number 00179-01-01. For Mr. Dudley is here to present his motion.
Move.
Motion by the pro temp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Williams Blake, I think I saw, and maybe others. Mr. Dudley?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I will pull the PowerPoint here back up, and this property is approximately 88 acres that's located, here we go, off of Freedom Boulevard, and the proposed zoning is residential general as well for the majority of the acreage, with 4.1 acres being set aside, which is the smaller red portion there along the road frontage in Freedom Boulevard, close to the entrance of this subdivision being reserved for general commercial. And here's a closer picture of the same to show the location of the property along Freedom Boulevard. It's very close in proximity to where there used to be a mulch place along Freedom Boulevard area, it's right along that area. And the current zoning, it's currently unzoned around the majority of the development, there is a small residential development just to the southwest of the property, and across the creek there is another subdivision, but it's zoned actually, open space right behind that. So this did go to planning commission for approval, they did vote unanimously six to zero to recommend this approval. Currently, water and sewer is not available, however, the city is contributing, and the developer will be responsible to make the project feasible for their contributions. And I do have a picture of the property, it is currently vacant, they do have a subdivision that has gone before planning commission for sketch plan approval, it's approximately 127 lots, and it is contingent upon the annexation.
Very well, there's been a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose a like sign, measure passes unanimously. Next matter for our consideration or introduction of resolutions, first is Resolution 2020-20 to honor Flo Town Yoga's contributions to efforts to revitalize downtown Florence. For that purpose, I'll turn to Councilman Willis, Councilman.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 2020, whereas the owners and associates of Flo Town Yoga have established a yoga studio in downtown Florence, and are small business owners and pillars of the community who are active in wellness in our community, and whereas investment by Flo Town Yoga is welcomed and is playing a role in the continued development of Florence Downtown Business District, and whereas the owners are contributors to communities' wellness through their community service and yoga classes, which have piloted during the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce has requested that the city recognize the business efforts of Flo Town Yoga and its contributions to the community, and now whereas it is resolved that upon the petition with the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce and in recognition of Flo Town Yoga contributions of the continued efforts to revitalize downtown Florence, the city of Council of Florence hereby declares the month of July through September the Flo Town Yoga quarter, and so resolved this quarter by Mayor and all of council, and thank you, Mayor.
Councilman, that's your motion, I gather?
Please move, sir.
Second by Councilwoman Irvin, any objection? Hearing none, I assume not, since we've all signed that resolution already, so in spite of the Freedom of Information Act, apparently, Jim, but we all did it separately and individually, to make the record of that. Very well, thank you for that, Councilman Willis, and I'm sure we have the original signed document here, and Ms. Pope will make sure he finds way to the chamber, I'm sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
For that, Councilman, and Mrs. Pope. The next matter for our consideration then is appointments to boards and commissions. I note that I have an appointment due to the Design Review Board and the Construction and Maintenance Board, Councilwoman Irvin has one to the Design Review Board, and Pro Temp Brand one to the Civic Center Commission. I've been advised that staff is trying to identify folks, some of those seats are specific seats that require specific professions and so forth, and I don't think that we have any appointments ready at this point, am I correct on that, Mr. Pro Temp and Councilwoman Irvin?
Yes.
Correct.
Very well, then, is there no objection? We will defer the appointments to boards and commissions to the next month, and hopefully we'll have some more success by then in identifying individuals to meet those requirements. Very well, matter is deferred. Next matter then, and the last matter, is executive session, such that we can discuss negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements pursuant to South Carolina Code 30-4-70 sub-A2, is there a motion, retired executive session? Is motion by the pro temp?
Second.
Objection, we retire executive session.